All right, it's six P M. Time to commence this meeting of the zoning board of appeals for May fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Call this meeting to order. Uh, roll call. We have a quorum. We have four of us here. Couple, couple acts absent. Let make that show. Um, no organizational procedural items that I'm aware of. Um. Uh, but we do have the, we do have the minutes to vote on. So I had, um, anybody have any comments? I did catch one thing in the April sixth minutes. Um, we haven't promoted. Ellen yet. We still have Claire as the co-chair, so just that small modification. That's the only one I saw. Anybody else have any edits?
I was gonna let that fly.
Okay. No other edits to have a motion for April sixth?
I moved to approve the minutes with the edit that you. Put out there.
Second, yeah.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from April? All right, perfect. Thank you. And then I think we're ready to go. Like I said, there's no organizational or procedural items. Um. We do have unfinished business. Right? And that's, uh, we'll go right into that first case. Uh, right after I do the preamble. So we got two cases this evening and then, um. That's it. We have no unfinished business other than that. So the chairman's preamble goes like this. This is the zoning board of appeals. Is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements. After determining whether there exists undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code and ordinances to the facts of each case. So any word of appeals does not create zoning, nor does it change or can change voting zoning. Uh, matters brought before here are to be concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance, the sign ordinance. And development environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variances for use. Density or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on these same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County. Within thirty days after the decision here is rendered. As I said, our unfinished business is the first item this evening. And it's a Z B A. Twenty-two dash twenty Brian Elliott on behalf of the homeowners at forty-eight, forty-nine man jet way magic court. Don't he Georgia request one special exception from chapter twenty-seven section two, six, nine. To allow raining retaining hall height. Up to twelve feet and two variances, one variances from chapter sixteen section seventy-eight. To allow our retaining wall to encroach. Into the seventy-five foot stream buffer and another variance from chapters one, twenty-seven section two, six, nine. To allow a retaining wall to encroach into the side setback. So with that, I will let staff give their interpretation.
Thank you. So yeah, they're requesting one special exception, one zoning variance and one stream buffer variance. So we're doing it all as one request, but technically it has three separate components. So on April sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Z B A deferred the case per the applicant's request due to a religious conflict with the April Z B A meeting date. Um, total correspondence, we've received two letters of opposition and eleven letters of support. Prior to the April Z B A meeting, we had received two letters of opposition and three letters of support. And since then, we've received eight letters of support. We received them this morning, so they weren't. Um, added to the packet that you all received. These is the existing conditions as shown in the aerial image to the right and the photo to the left. The lot is zoned R one hundred and there is an existing two-story single-family home constructed in two thousand and six. The property falls approximately sixty feet from the front of the property to the rear of the property. The stream is located to the rear of the property and approximately a third of the property is covered by its associated buffers. A small portion of the existing house and existing pool deck encroach in the ten-foot side setback. The applicant proposes to remove a portion of the existing deck and to construct a ten-foot retaining wall to the rear and side of the home. The retaining wall will encroach approximately five feet into both side setbacks. If this approach were a sandal in request, we could do it administratively through the special administrative permit process. But as that specific relief is part of a larger project under the purview of the zoning board of appeals. Relief for the side yard encroachment is part of this case is a variance request. Approximately a third of the wall will be located in the seventy-five foot stream buffer prompting a stream buffer variance request. And the height of the wall twelve feet also prompts a special exception request. As a quick reminder, a special exception is basically a variance. It just has fewer criteria. And I have the criteria on screen later on if anyone needs to review them. To build the proposed retaining wall, the applicant would require approval of both variance requests and the special exception request. The site plan shows the proposed retaining wall in red and the portion of the property covered by the stream buffer in blue. So like I said, there are technically three different requests here. Um, so the special exception request is prompted by the twelve-foot height of the proposed retaining wall, which is the maximum height allowed per our municipal code. Um, and the wall will be located in the stream buffer prompting the stream buffer request. And it will encroach into both side setbacks prompting that third request. Um, so the subject property falls from the front of the property towards the rear of the property by approximately sixty feet, which creates a pretty uniquely steep backyard. Um, additionally, the buildable area is limited due to the fact that approximately a third of the property is covered by stream buffers. However, approximately half of the other lots in this subdivision have similar topographical challenges and are restricted by stream buffers. And there is no other retaining wall project of this magnitude in the neighborhood. Staff does not find that the variances and a special exception are necessary for creating usable space, given that the retaining wall. Could easily be reconfigured to remain outside of the buffer. And outside of the side setbacks while still allowing the applicant use of the rear yard. The applicant states that the proposed retaining wall is planned as relief for erosion control. Um, there are other methods for erosion control and velocity dissipation methods for downspouts that would be less obtrusive. Such as the installation of riprap or ground cover. Um, while a larger retaining wall and an associated reduction in vegetative buffer would likely worsen downslope impacts. Instead, it appears the main purpose of the retaining wall is to create a more level backyard. While understandable from a recreational usage standpoint, the staff does not find an extreme hardship with this request. Overall, staff finds that the proposed project goes beyond the minimum necessary to afford relief and approval of the variances and the special exception. Could potentially grant the applicant special privileges. Here are the three different review and approval criteria for your reference. I'm happy to pause on any of them or explain them. Otherwise, I'll keep going.
Allegra, could you? Review this special exception. Well, I guess just if you give me a moment to review it here.
Yeah, absolutely. Let me know if you have any questions about it.
Okay, so these qualifications under a special exception are very. Common or they, they also appear under. Stream buffer and zoning ordinances.
Right, they're the three that are sort of in that the all three having.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
No problem. Any other questions or should I move on?
Yeah, basically the way you have that table set up is that. They like one, two, and three are. Parallel with each among each column there.
No, not exactly. I have them in order the way they appear in our code.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, those three that are for the special exception are also present for the variance for the zoning ordinance and for the stream.
You can keep going. We'll probably want to come back to that slide though.
Okay, that sounds good. So based on these reasons, staff recommends denial of the request. Um, as a note, after close of business yesterday, we received a hundred-page presentation from the applicant, which we haven't fully reviewed yet. Um, so if the zoning board of appeals wanted to have more time with that to review that or have us review it, um, we would also support a deferral if that's what you all wanted to do. Um, so I'm available for any questions.
Okay, I'm sorry. You might want to come back. Um. My question, my first question is concerning the height of the wall. You said that. And it was in the application that twelve feet is the maximum allowed per. The city code or.
Correct, with a special exception, you can request up to twelve, to a twelve-foot retaining wall.
Okay, what height?
Yeah, so anything under four feet, you can just do as part of a permit. Anything from four to eight feet is a special administrative permit. And then anything from eight to twelve is a special exception request.
Is that inclusive of fencing or just read like? You know, just tiles or what do you call them? You know, pavers?
The blocks. Yeah, so that's just for retaining walls. Fences have their own sort of separate regulations.
Um, I might have another one. Should I ask additional questions now or after the applicants? Okay, I'll hold my questions until we hear from the applicant.
Thanks, Allegra. With the applicant or representative, like to address the board, state your name and address and add on to what the the board is, or the staff has already proceeded.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to be here. I've listened to so much on YouTube from one of these, I guess there's seventeen posted and got the ability to listen to them and I'm glad to be here to present my case. Um, so it was nice listening to what Allegra and the city have had to do. It's presented so far. How do I? Just continue to.
I think you just scrolled it out. It's just cool. Yeah, I think it's probably easiest if you want to use.
All right, so our request is for retaining wall. Um, we want to control the erosion in our backyard. We want to create a safe area for our kids to play. I mean, we're going to create a safe space for our dog and utilize our land better. So I'm gonna um, go ahead and just kind of summarize some of the things that we've kind of seen in this packet so far from the cities presented. The background for the proposal by the city staff has started their house is a, is it two hundred and ninety-eight, two thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven square feet? Um, constructed in two thousand and six. It's actually not. According to the DeKalb County Tax Commission, our house is four thousand seven hundred and sixty-five square feet. Not that this is relevant to the case. It just begins to show a pattern of inaccurate information presented by the city. Um, the city also claims that approximately half of the other lots in our subdivision have a similar topic up topographical challenges and retaining walls are a relatively uncommon improvement in the backyard of the subdivision. Actually, over seventy percent of the homes backing up to our stream have a retaining wall. And fifty percent of the homes in our subdivision have retaining wall. This would actually put a retaining wall in the subdivision is a common improvement to the backyard and necessary to provide relief. While several properties do have retaining walls, the staff, this is what the staff said, they found that none are as tall as a proposed pot project. Most of their tanning was in the neighborhood are only several feet tall. The proposed project may go beyond minimum necessary to provide relief. But they use the word several and that usually means more than two. The overwhelming majority of their homes in our subdivision do have retaining walls and most of those retaining walls are between four and six feet in height. Some may be approved. They're older than the city was. And so, you know, they might be around because during DeKalb County, they might have had different rules. Um, looking here, the staff also notated that no other retaining wall project of this magnitude has existed in the neighborhood. That's simply not the case. My neighbor's lots to the south, two and three houses down have retaining walls that exceed roughly a hundred and forty-three and a hundred and thirty percent. The breadth of our proposed wall and the heights of the walls is as tall as twelve feet when considered as a staff does. Looking back at Z B A case twenty-two nineteen, they said that two walls working in tandem, these were two four-foot walls function as an eight-foot wall. So let's sit there. Given that there are several retaining walls of this scope already in existence in close proximity to our proposed project, affording relief of the extreme slope should not be considered a special privilege. Um, the, they also state that there are several other methods of erosion control and velocity dissipation methods for downspouts that would be less obtrusive, such as insulation of riprap or ground cover, while larger retaining walls are associated with associated ground, reduction of ground, reduction vegetation buffer would likely worsen the downslope impacts. The U S Department of Agriculture, the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission, the Green Book that this planning committee uses extensively and they bring it up many times. And the University of Georgia College of Architectural and Environmental Sciences all state that a retaining wall along with the proper backfill and grading improvement, uh, grading improved downslope impacts. I actually called the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission, talked to Robert there, explained to our, our situation, showed him pictures and he actually did say that this would be a green book issue and not a yell, a blue book issue. And that a retaining wall, given the size of this or the slope in our backyard, which is fifty-two degree angle would necessarily need a retaining wall. Um, so I think that it's really important because, you know, even stated as recently in February second in this meeting, they the Z B A relies heavily on accurate information by the city. And in this case, it doesn't seem to be many of the times done. So just kind of looking through, this is the ask, we're asking for retaining one in our backyard and that little lower left-hand corner, that's the area that's going into the stream buffer. Um, it looks like we're going taking down a tree. Actually, we don't have to take down any trees for this project. Um, if we look at the erosion that occurs, it's occurring because um, water is running to the left and the right side of our house and creating these huge erosion rolls and they're getting bigger and bigger. Um, we've tried, we've spent hundred dollars on that side of our house putting rocks and it just gets washed away besides the very, very big rocks that are right there. But still downstream, you can see that we have these massive erosion rolls. Um, they just carry water with it. On this is the right side of our house. Water goes down to the right and it goes down underneath our deck. Underneath our deck, we're having the same issue with these large erosion rolls. Um, as you can see on the right-hand picture there, the last step is not stable. It's been washed away. I don't let my kids go down there anymore. Um, and right in front of that, we have about a twelve-inch degradation in our yard and the yard slopes now to the right. Um, the city stated that due to the location of the one, a seventy-five foot stream buffer, the site work associated with the request would remove the natural buffer and may cause environmental impacts of the stream. The natural buffer is an eroding slope that is so steep vegetation cannot grow ideally. Being able to rehab this area, graded in plant grass would absolutely be better than the way it is now. The pink triangle here represents a visual of the proposed area that would be in the stream buffer. We're looking at Ivy um, in basically earth that is not able to retain water and therefore allowing it to rush down the side of the house. Um, we've lost five trees and around our house in the stream buffer recently and three occurred in high winds, all occurred in days after heavy rains. This is what the area behind our house looks like and my neighbors and a few houses down those tree, those tires are in my neighbor's yard, but you can see here that there's just a lot of fallen trees. There's not really good understory growth. Um, and nothing can really sort of, you know, nothing new is surviving because of the, just the massive erosion reels that we have. This is a tree that we lost in our backyard as well as trees that were uprooted in our neighboring yard. So how does it, what does the train look like? Looking at the elevation drop, the slope is equals rise over run. I think we all know that from school. Every time every line on this topographical map on any topographical map typically um, is it two-footed an elevation change? Our entire property drops sixty-two or falls sixty-two feet. Um, and that does it over a length of two hundred and twenty-five feet behind our house specifically. Um, the elevation drops from one hundred, ten thousand fifty-eight to one thousand oh eight and over a hundred and thirteen foot length and that behind our house, we have a forty-four percent slope. Um, if you take the inverse tangent of that, it creates a basically an angle of forty-one point four degrees.
Um, just a time check. You got one minute left to, if anybody wants to speak on behalf, it's got to be within that same.
Okay, so what does a fifty-seven degree slope look like? This is a fifty-seven degree slope. We have erosion rules that go there. How does slow play a role in erosion? Um, this is the erosion control, sleepers, you know, that goes over all the conditions here. Terracing helps. View from our neighbor's house looks okay. There are trees. Talked with our neighbors. Um, I know one of them sent a note in that said, hey, we don't want it. Then we talked to them. We talked about ways that we can make things better. We talked about letting them have some control over it. We're going to plant trees in front of the um, wall. There's looking at the variance rows. I know they missed, the staff mentioned that there's not many retaining walls. Every line on here is the green line is a retaining wall. Just looking through all the houses, we can see the retaining walls that are on our street and our community. There's a lot of them. Yes, it would be nice to build a backyard. Looking at different cases, the Z B is already all that has anything ever happened in Dumwitty that compares to this E B A case twenty-one oh seven, they wanted to build micro trigger presented the case before y'all. Um, and they were granted actually a larger retaining wall than what we're proposing or same, sorry. They're bringing in more space. They went further in the stream buffer and there took down, I think fourteen trees. We don't need to do any of that. All we want to do is level our yard, create an area where water can drain safer for the stream. We're not going to have herbicides and all the fertilizers that rush from the front of our house into the stream. Um, and ultimately, we're going to create a better area for our neighbors. The city also mentioned there's been no other proposed or no other project that's bigger than ours. If we look at our proposed wall, it's a hundred and fifty-six feet. Um, our neighbors, two houses down, two hundred and twenty-three feet. This is pictures of their wall. Same thing goes here. Looking at retaining concrete retaining wall, two hundred and seven feet. Um, this is the one that's two-six feet walls working in tandem, create a twelve-foot wall.
Okay, sorry, sorry, ten minutes.
Now I get it.
Yeah, yeah, everybody gets ten minutes.
Again, totally fair.
No, good. Excellent. Thank you for the detail. Appreciate that. So, yeah, we ran out of time for people to speak in favor, but that was excellent presentation. Appreciate your time on that. So then we open it up to the opposition. Is there anyone here or I guess I don't know, maybe online, do we? That wants to speak in opposition to this project? Okay, with that, we'll close the public comment and open up for board discussion.
So this is a tremendous amount of information that came at us without time to review. And it sounds like because it came in after close of business yesterday, I don't know that staff has, I don't know. Had a chance to review, but I feel like for us to be able to take all of that information into account and maybe come up with additional questions and get staff's feedback on it. I personally couldn't, I mean, you put a tremendous amount of effort into all this. I can't possibly review all of this in the time.
We, we allowed it tonight. Normally we wouldn't allow it that close to the, to hearing date, but we allowed, they put a lot of work into it. Yeah.
Um, I, I'm, I mean, I can ask some more questions tonight, but I would not be comfortable making a decision on this until I have time to review this and staff has time to review it and I, I mean, I know it's been deferred once, but my personal opinion and we can just continue discussing is that it needs to be deferred again in order for us to okay, take everything, but we'll continue to.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that. Artie?
Um, I, I have one simple, one question. Um, there was a lot of discussion for the applicant. There's a lot of discussions regarding, um, the, the sizes, the amount of projects that was big, but the ultimate question here is the height.
And.
And the buffer. Right, right. And I could not even understand that you said, um, there's another project that was deeper, but the height seems to differ you from most of the project. I think I've been doing this since this started and for some reason twelve feet is unique to me.
There's been two special, I mean, they're requested.
There've been two.
I, I at least two, because I just went through the various.
Seven two.
The great, yeah.
You know how, you know how long the city is, two thousand and eight?
Well, I mean, that was.
Don't, don't fight with.
I'm not.
You're, you're trying to get somewhere and I'm not.
No, no, I'm not trying.
Okay, okay, but my point is, is simply that the twelve feet is a problem. So my question is for you simply, why do you need twelve feet?
It's a good question. I think the, the unique elevation, the drop off, that fifty-two degree slope in our backyard and how much it goes down requires, if we're going to spend this much money to, to make the route, to get rid of the erosion and we could put maybe a six-foot wall, but if we go up a little higher to the max of the city allows, we're not going, we don't want to go over that, but it's what the city max allows, then we can actually create a backyard for our kids to play in. And we're take care of two things at once. Um, we also have a rectangle that is failing in kind of in front of that. So we'd have to do a lot of remediation, not only take that down, but then find ways to put multiple retaining walls up.
Did you consider a ten-foot wall, an eight-foot wall?
Yeah, we considered in the ten, eight-foot walls. I mean, after looking at the projects that have been approved and kind of how far we could go back. You know, I didn't realize that the twelve-foot walk is, is within the scope that the city allows. There's never been a question of, you know, if it's done to standards and codes, I mean, these balls with the module block, what it, they can go thirty, forty feet high and be safe. So I didn't realize that that was going to be a sticking point.
I have, I have one more.
If we do, if we do have a shorter wall, if we have a smaller wall, then we have to bring in the yard quite a bit. Considerably.
So, and then we could go back and forth. So the, and you, you realize that the twelve foot is the maximum that's allowed.
Yes, sir.
But after as as was described, you know, as you get higher, you have to get a different type of there's a different standard. That's what this, that's what they mean. Um, the second thing is, um, there was the city stated that there were other there were other things that you could have done other than, than, than um, encroaching on the buffer or having this type of wall. Tell me, hold on, hold on, let me finish my question. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let, let me finish, please.
Yes, sir.
So that way you could understand.
I understand.
Tell me in your own words or review to me, tell me why nothing else will do but what you propose.
So the city recommended, well, they were talking about was downspout erosion. So, or, you know, things to, to make the downspout erosion better. So I don't think they were covering the water that's coming out from around the house, but this is they specifically mentioned the downspout erosion. Um, so, and they mentioned riprap, which is big rocks that come in kind of surge rock that break that velocity of the water to allow it to go into the stream at less velocity. So those erosion rails are I guess they don't occur. However, that does nothing to actually grade the land and create a system that is going to be better. If we put that in there, then we still have these erosion rules. We still have a foundation, a fundamental system in with this fifty-degree slope, fifty-two degree slope that it's going to occur again. I mean, there's just no really way around it. I mean, the U S Department of Agri, Agri agriculture says in these steep inclines that we have a structural, structural, um, something structural is needed to take care of the erosion or prevent the erosion from occurring.
So where's the erosion issue that's causing you the hardship? So we got ultimately, we got to decide what the hardship is because around the house and the footings and that's not going to be remedied by the wall in the stream buffer. So what is the, what's the?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'll fill you finish.
No, that's, that's my question. It's like, what are we trying to accomplish with the wall? Not, not only erosion of by the house, that doesn't be impact.
Well, it's, it's the erosion too on this that is on the side of the house. Um, so if we look at these, I mean, all this erosion is still occurring and it starts in my house. Can you see, are you seeing on the pictures?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry. So it starts at the top of the house. So it carries all that rainwater. That rainwater goes down into like past, you know, some of our equipment there. And then we have these huge rills that continue down. Um, it's put a two-foot hole in our fence there, but it continues down inside and outside of our wall and continues down directly into the stream. So we need a fundamental way to regrade that whole area to create an absorbent place where the rain can actually penetrate the soil. And which is what the retaining wall has, the retaining wall has all this fundamental systems to take care of the rainwater. Um, and then expel it slower. So it doesn't have that velocity when it reaches the stream.
But wouldn't the wall being as far away from where these rills are already beginning? By the time the water gets to the wall, it has, I, I don't see how the.
Sorry, we're, we're actually going in and we're putting dirt in. So we're building a wall and then we're backfilling with dirt.
You're leveling your yard.
Leveling the yard and then putting grass on top so that that can absorb the rainwater and that by grading it proper. Leveling the yard and then putting grass on top so that that can absorb the rainwater and that by grading it properly, it won't, you know, this, we're gonna prevent this system, and then we're also gonna put in channels for water to go and act. Ryan is uh probably knows this better than I do. He's does a construction, taking care of the construction, but there's fundamental ways that you can deal with the rainwater.
Okay.
That allows. Thank you.
So my my name's Brian Elliott. I'm the contractor working with Brett on this. You asked what he's trying to accomplish. He's trying to accomplish several different things. One is the erosion control issue that he's having. One is some type of backyard, just right now he does not have a backyard. His backyard right now consists of a deck, and if you guys can see this picture, there's a there's a large deck that goes around the back of the pool and then a paver patio that's kind of up against the house. Right now, the deck is failing because the footings are starting to wash away underneath the deck. Underneath this deck is an old cross tie retaining wall that's about six feet high that is also failing. So he's got the majority of the soil on the back of the house is failing, is starting to come downhill. It's causing the pavers to start to migrate and settle, so he's getting holes in the paper patio that are around the pool. The back of the pool that is around the deck, so where the deck meets the pool, there's an eight foot tall retaining wall, concrete retaining retaining wall right now that is starting to be undermined from the dirt washing down the hill underneath this deck. So he's already got a tall retaining wall there. If we took the deck off and the retaining wall, it would just be bare dirt at the same slope underneath the deck. So we're trying to manage and figure out a way to solve that issue and create a safe situation in the backyard. We've asked for the side yard variance because we want the wall to go out as far as we can without going into the property lines. So we can capture the water that's running down each side of the house and direct it in front of the retaining wall into drains that we will have, which will then take the wall, take the water from the top elevation of by where the pool's at now and carry it down to the bottom of the wall, so it is not running in concentrated flow down the bank. And then we can convert that to sheet flow at the bottom of the wall. Um we have asked for the height variance or the height special exemption, because if we went to ten feet, the the wall would come back up the hill by six feet or so, and so he loses a whole bunch of space in the backyard. He already has no grass area, no no yard to speak of, it's just deck and patio back there. Um this is not, you know, they did not put the the retaining walls in, they didn't put the pool in, all this stuff was inherited when they bought the house. So he's trying to fix an issue that was existing when he bought the house. The stream buffer variance in the corner over there, the reason we're asking for that, the stream comes up obviously where the buffer comes up right there, that is um an area that yeah, he could potentially move the wall back up closer to the house, but it's a it's kind of a flat area. It's one of the only areas where we're able to kind of provide access down into that and create more of that space uh across the backyard. What was your other, you had three questions. What was the other one?
I think ultimately you answered the question of what are they trying to accomplish? That was Joe's question. The other question was, why is a twelve foot wall requested not as an eight or a ten?
Yeah, the twelve foot wall was to capture as much space as they could and still stay within the city's requirements, you know, not go over twelve feet. Now, this wall is not twelve feet high all the way across the back. You're gonna have maybe a twenty to thirty foot section across the back that'll be at twelve feet, and then it starts to gradually come up the hill and on the sides. So on the side, you're gonna have, you know, this wall will kind of dead end into the ground where you have no height at all. So it's not, and you know, it's not a twelve foot high wall all the way across the back and up both sides.
I think the other question was, how is the wall going to improve the erosion and drainage? But that's been explained also by the leveling of the yard and the drainage systems.
Yep, and you know that nothing will grow back there because most of the time the yard is shaded, so it's gonna have to be some type of shade tolerant uh ground cover that is put below the wall in that area where, you know, nothing, essentially nothing grows.
Is grass going to grow? Because you spoke, some, one of you spoke of grass.
If it is a shade tolerant grass, we can get that to grow back there, but you're not gonna get like Bermuda grass to grow back there. You're also never, this is not an area that would be cut with a lawnmower or anything like that. So this is more of a natural grass, natural area back there going into the stream buffer.
So I'm just gonna see what uh the, right now it's eight foot and it's gonna go, the wall's gonna go in the same exact location as it is.
No, sir.
Yeah, I know. I want you to explain that to me. I'm leaving you.
So right now, if you look at the pool, the back of the pool, there's, you can see the coping, the white coping around the back of the pool. So the backside of the pool is an eight foot tall retaining wall right now. The new retaining wall will go where this blue line is that you're looking at on the picture. So it moves away back to create yard space. The deck goes away, so we would be taking out the entire deck and that old wooden retaining wall that's under the deck.
Okay, okay.
But the pool would stay in place.
So the section here in yellow, the shame, is that the portion that goes in the in the stream buffer?
That is the only portion that goes into the stream buffer. And that's currently where their stairs go down that they really can't use right now.
Okay.
You mentioned the uh those rail ties underneath the pool that are using sport.
Yeah.
It's it's part of the scope of work ripping those out and doing.
Yeah, so we'd be removing that old retaining wall, the old deck, everything that's kinda in.
Okay, but preserving the pool so temporarily presumably like, you know, suspending that pool until you.
We we wouldn't have to do anything to the pool because of the way it's built. It's it was essentially built with a a poured concrete wall, retaining wall around the back of it.
So I I I think I I understand, now we understand the portion that at the ends of it, you probably won't even see any height because of what's gonna happen to the wall. It's actually a retaining wall. But the, from the eight to ten to twelve feet, that's basically for to be able to have more of an enjoyable grass uh yard.
That's to create a yard at all, yes.
Okay.
So we would not be putting a deck back in this area. All of that will end up being turf.
What happens, I I the old, the existing fence that is removed?
The old chain link fence that's around there?
Yes.
We had not planned to remove that. That's not in the scope and it's not in the area where we would be working.
Okay. I I'm not asking, I just was curious. I I was just curious what was happening to her.
Staff, what's the uh encroachment with this? I don't, I know it's a third or two thirds into the, can you give me some footage that seventy five feet? I know it was in the pack and I remember how how much it encroaches into the stream buffer.
Um let me pull up the site plan. I think that's probably the easiest way to do it. Yeah, approximately a third of it, sort of linear wise, would be in the stream buffer.
So that's seventy five feet stream buffer, it's roughly fifth, uh twenty five feet into the.
No, I think a third of the entire wall.
Oh, I got that. I got that part. I wonder what the maximum encroachment was in the stream buffer.
Oh, um I think it goes maybe about ten feet deep.
Um wait, while you're up there, sorry. So the question, if, I don't know if this is in the scope of work or not, but with respect to retaining walls and then building a fence on top of a retaining wall, is it, is it just the assumption then that you're starting with a clean slate and you just follow the normal rules? Okay.
Correct. It'll be sort of at grade once the retaining wall is built, so.
I know we talked about, I mean, the wall inherently, right? It retaining, the idea is to stop all water erosion. Was there detailed plans presented to the city about how that water would be mitigated? I mean, there's a lot of runoff by the, it's kind of anatory. The 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 lots half of them done where you're like this. So it's not, like I said initially, it's not gonna stop the rain rundown by the by the house. In fact, we wanna allow that to get to the stream. So my question is, have they really adequately proposed or shown how that all that water is gonna be, there's gonna be same flow basically into the stream buffer? I mean.
No, we haven't seen a mitigation plan.
We need a mitigation plan, I think.
I have another question for the city while you have. Tell me, um understand it, but it's it's amazing how you read this stuff and then the presentation makes it clear, um no way. So I understand why the height is a question, I mean, unlike and it's not, and the applicant, whether they want to understand or not, it's it's a privilege that we are, you you're asking for something outside of what what's permitted and normally, so it's a variance. But would the city feel more comfortable with a certain height between eight to twelve? Or is it, is it something that bothers you guys a little bit more than than the other? You don't have to answer it.
It's not really within, you know, it's not really our job to figure out what the right height is. You know, we just review the project that's before us. Um you know, our, one of our main concerns is with the the stream buffer variance. Um we sort of said from the beginning that we weren't sure we were gonna be able to support that, so um just because we do feel that, again, it could be reconfigured to where, you know, to where the wall would not need to be encroaching into the stream buffer.
That the wall would be a little bit more ahead, so they pushed it back to get more more of a yard. So because of that, it's not really something that is necessary, something more for their needs. Okay, I got you. But the height itself is not really what bothers you, just the fact that.
You know, I think sort of, we feel that the request generally is sort of beyond um what we could, what we would consider the minimum necessary to afford relief. The stream buffer is of specific concern.
Understood. Thank you.
The, can you explain in greater detail on the stream buffer concern? So, because when I look at this figure, whether it's yours or the applicant's, the retaining wall doesn't seem to be, I mean, yeah, it's hitting the stream buffer a little bit, right? Um but it doesn't seem to be too intrusive. So when you say you're concerned about the stream buffer, you're talking about runoff? Are we talking about more specifics?
So two aspects, um by and large, one, like it's if you have a large project like this, the amount of fill that would be brought in. So it's a lot of soil that would be brought in and the amount of disturbance of the area to put, because it's not just like putting the wall and you have to sort of have machinery around and so forth. And then the second aspect um is that instead of the water sort of being channeled sort of in specific points close to the house, which is another thirty, forty feet away from the stream buffer, it would now be channel sort of at the wall, you know, at specific points in the stream buffer. So you would sort of move the problem sort of with the erosion more or less like downhill at those specific locations closer to the stream, and we're concerned about that aspect too.
So what what happens to the um, and I know there's letters, to the neighbors, right? Is the runoff, is there any concern that this changes the runoff towards demo channels at a certain different way?
We're we're concerned about the stream since the stream is directly behind the house.
But no one's complaining about, oh, I don't want this project because it's gonna affect my property.
Um I mean, we've received the two letters of opposition and the, I think, I believe eight or so, or sorry, eleven in support.
Okay.
Yeah, haven't heard anything outside of those.
Thank you. I mean, for me, like I said, you know, I'm always listening, willing to listen. Not bothered of it as much as I was when I, when I first started, but I I am worried in my mind. I'm not an engineer. That is a lot of stuff has to be, because whether or not we see the wall, but it's a lot that has to get in, you know. So, so yeah, yeah. So I've been, I'd just like to see, make sure that we get the mitigation plan, at least as part of zoning vote, because I feel like I did my portion, you know, I I think I need that at least, because I don't, I don't see anything here, really. I see a lot of, a lot of work being put into this to convince us um, but but there's gotta be something that protects the very thing that we want to prevent, you know? Um that that's me.
No, I I agree. I think, I think the applicant, um presumably homeowner is trying to like make best of what they can do with the land. I personally like to see a compromise between the city and applicant, you know, like some type of mitigation plan to where, you know, you have use of the yard, but also not overflow that stream buffer. The thing that's, I can't really speak to is like Paul was saying about the disruption of, you know, stream buffer area when you start doing stuff back there. I mean, I understand that too, but I also understand it from the applicant's standpoint about, hey, you know, sometimes, it's like when you rehab a house, you find all kinds of problems. But sometimes you just gotta get in there and tear tear crap up to make it better, you know? And and with that comes a lot of dirty work and, you know, so, but I I do agree. Um you know, as much as I would like to to figure out an option for a vote today, I think a mitigation plan is a big part of this, because a lot of times in stream buffer cases, we, you know, that really helps the case. Um but I wouldn't want the applicant to go through all that trouble if the city didn't believe that was actually gonna help them, you know, or change, necessarily change their position. So I guess my question of the city would be, is a mitigation plan like a must for this? Would, without giving a definitive answer one way or another, would it help the cause of them, you know, uh compromising for some type of solution that would be beneficial to both parties?
I think we we had this sort of previously um with uh that's another variance case, but the question came up for the retaining wall and stream buffer. Um I think for this case, the the staff position would be that we would ask for a reduction in the size of that wall, like overall the extent of that wall. And those go hand in hand, the deeper it goes in, the taller it gets, because the grade drops off so much, uh so it would go hand in hand. I think that would be uh from the, from the staff position, that would be sort of the appropriate way to mitigate the impacts.
So that's that's the biggest concern or biggest concern of you guys is correct, okay?
So.
Can you please be sure to speak in the microphones?
Um as far as. Yeah, what's what we're just, what what they're discussing is, uh is it possible to to do in a conditional approval with a mitigation plan if it hasn't been presented yet? But as part of the approval hypothetically, could you?
That was my recommendation, if they if they wanted approval and there seems to be some, you know, uh unsettlement about, you know, the disturbance of land, exactly where the waters are gonna flow, not just a wall, you know, there's been some discussion about where the drains and so forth. But I think there's so significant runoff and there's such a significant drop off, and I think the board would feel better if there was some kind of a mitigation plan, um potent- potentially a conditional approval based on that.
Or in other words, does it have to be presented to you first prior and and essentially be deferred, or can it be a a means of conditional approval?
Um we would probably ask, because depending on what what the issue is, we may have to sort of increase the ask for the stream buffer variance, because it may require them to go sort of deeper into into the buffer. So I think we would ask for um or defer in that case, so we can review this and include it as part of the variance request that need be.
And the city hydrologist has been there or has not?
City engineer has been out there, I guess. Yep, and then that that sort of, that that's sort of what we would ask for um, depending on the turnaround time for the applicant, what they feel comfortable with submitting to us, a mitigation plan, we can review it and probably there in about a week. So we, on on our end, we could bring it back at to the next meeting in four weeks.
Okay.
But it depends on sort of the ability of the applicant to to draw up a mitigation plan more or less, yeah.
I think. I mean, and you know, I'm come, I mean, I I, me, I like that the for a part, because I like to know exactly what they're gonna do. And.
Yeah, and Ellen expressed. Yeah, and Ellen expressed concern about, you know, the large document that kind of came late and we went through some of it tonight, but. Um, I think both those conditions probably merit.
So how, so how much time do you guys think you need?
I think for thirty days.
Yeah, because you guys in thirty days, we're going to give you the benefit of the doubt. You want thirty days, you want thirty days. No, to the, the city already told us.
Some of that information should already have, be.
I would think it's.
That they're, that they've already incorporated into their plan, just maybe hasn't been communicated.
Presumably.
Yeah, we have most of that information because we have the drainage designed into the wall. So it's just going to be a matter of putting it on paper and I want my engineer to do that.
Okay.
So, uh, no problem getting a mitigation plan together. I do want to point out that it doesn't matter what height this wall is, the disturbed area for us is going to be the same. So it doesn't matter if it's a four foot wall or a twenty foot wall, the disturbed area to physically put the wall in is going to be the same. So we're not going into the stream buffer more because it's a twelve foot tall wall versus a four foot tall wall. So I, I know that might have, because it was a little confusing to me. I just wanted to clear that up a little bit.
So if I can ask on that note. Knowing that there's this portion of the wall going into the buffer. Why did you all consider angling the wall at that buffer line and maybe straddling the line or it just?
It was really a, a function of the current elevation out there. So what we did was we followed a contour, an elevation contour across the back of the yard. The stream buffer is not at the same elevation because it's a distance. So that's how we ended up with the location of the wall.
Okay.
And just to say, and then I think we go back to the CBA case, pulling those seven keys, the micro trigger, what you're talking about, it was probably one of the best plans, I think. Right, it's one of the best plans you've seen, City United, based on something that, because they initially asked less than. And then it's in the more, and then it's in the more in the stream buffer. But, you know, if you play soccer, if you look at a compartment. See, part of these spaces, those, those, that's thirty-four feet, city at that time, but that was okay, this is to go into the part of the directory, to play soccer. Play activities. We call that in, we would be cutting off the end of our area only severing, which, you know.
Remember, you're looking for hardship. You might be, you might be going down a slope you're not going to. You, you do it, you might not, you might be messing yourself up.
We know you want it. Yeah.
Sometimes being quiet is better.
That's an okay thing to stay out of.
I'll tell, I'll tell you what, guys. Um, I think if, if you, if the rest of the world thinks differently, then you tell me. Um, we're definitely thinking of the, wanted to defer it because, um, we want to give you times to get your mitigation plan together and review this a little bit. Um, I think if you could bring the wall a little bit closer and talk to the city, that, but that's your fine. But my, for us, we want to review this more and we, we need a mitigation plan. And, and, and that's, that's the story.
Cause there really isn't a hardship. I mean, not having a yard is not a hardship.
Yeah, well, I, I told him, I told him that, that to tell me about the kids, because we're trying to help you at this point.
If you buy, when you buy a home on this kind of lot, that's what you, that's what you, that's.
But I think I don't want to really go back and forth that much. I'm thinking that, so is the plan, do I move for the referral or how, how does it?
I don't vote.
What, what's the proper for now? And, yeah, okay, so I.
Party, you would make a motion to defer it with the.
So I, I make a motion to defer this, um, base number twenty-two dash two zero, ZBA twenty-two dash two zero to the next calendar. And, um, for.
So it's June first, I think, is the next meeting. Yes.
I'm fine.
Yeah, the June post meeting.
Okay, to the June first meeting. Um, and, um, for, we needed more information and to allow things to happen between the parties.
Do we want, do you want to specify mitigation plan in that deferral motion?
No, I, I don't want to. I don't, I, 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 I do? No, I don't. But if somebody seconds it, it'll be deferred and we'll take care of it better.
I second that deferral motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, deferral? No opposed. All right, we defer one more month. All right, thank you. Second case, ZBA twenty-three dash oh five, Rebecca Goncalves, sorry, uh, on behalf of the homeowner at, uh, forty-five fifty-one Village Springs Run Dunwoody. Request a variance from chapter sixteen, section seventy-eight to allow a deck and stairs to encroach into the seventy-five foot stream buffer. Staff, would you please review this for us?
Absolutely. So these are the existing conditions as shown in the survey to the right. The lot is owned R fifty and there is an existing two thousand fifty, two thousand fifty-two square foot, two-story, single-family home constructed in nineteen ninety-four. The property falls approximately thirty feet from the front of the property to the rear of the property. The stream is located to the rear of the property and approximately two-thirds of the property is covered by the stream's associated buffers. There is an existing one hundred and fifty square foot deck and sixty square foot stairs to the rear of the home that encroach into the seventy-five foot stream buffer. These are shown in the photo to the left as they currently exist. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing deck and stairs and to construct a new two hundred and twenty square foot deck and eighty-three square foot stairs. The new deck will be seventy square feet bigger than the existing deck and will expand almost two feet further into the seventy-five foot stream buffer than the existing deck. The new stairs will be twenty-three square feet bigger than the existing stairs and we will, we'll be reconfigured slightly. There is an existing concrete pad underneath the deck that will remain intact. Since the new deck will have a two-foot overhang beyond the concrete pad and the new stairs will not be in the same footprint as the existing stairs. A variance is required for the additional encroachment into the seventy-five foot stream buffer. Land disturbance will be minimized as the deck footings will be placed on the existing concrete pad. The site plan is shown to the right and the proposed elevation is shown to the left. The seventy-five foot stream buffer covers approximately five thousand five hundred square feet of the seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-four square foot property. Increasing the impervious surface within the stream buffer by ninety-three square feet would be a minimally intrusive improvement, impacting only one point seven percent of the stream buffer. The project will only require minimal disturbance to install the footings and construction will not, will not significantly impact the stream bank, natural habitat or water quality. It will be extremely difficult for the homeowners to make any improvements to the house without encroaching into the buffer, as it encompasses approximately two-thirds of the buildable area. A deck is a standard improvement for most homeowners and this proposal seeks to expand only slightly beyond what currently exists. Almost all the other homes in the Village Springs subdivision have rear decks and the property immediately adjoining the subject property received a variance in twenty twenty-one for a rear deck in the stream buffer. So very common for this neighborhood. Thus, staff finds there would be no special privileges granted and finds the project does not go beyond the minimum necessary to afford relief. Staff finds the denial of variance would cause an undue hardship by preventing homeowners' reasonable use of their property. Overall, the requested variance would be consistent with the spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval of the request, subject to the conditions shown on the stream here, which are standard conditions, conditioning it to, to the site plan and to, um, you know, construction must commence within two years of the granting of the variance. And then constructions all be with hand tools only, which is standard for the stream buffer variances to minimize disturbance. So I'm available for any further questions.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Would the applicant care to address the board?
Hello. Um, so yeah, I'm here on behalf of the owner.
Please state your name, if you would, and address, please.
Yes, my name is Rebecca Goncalves Altamano. I'm the owner of Altive Studio. I'm the contractor for this job.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm here on behalf of the owner. Uh, as Alibra stated, we don't have, uh, too much of disturbance in the area. We're just encroaching, uh, encroaching one feet and one foot and nine inches into the stream buffer. We're gonna, we're planning to maintain the same exactly footprint of the concrete pad down below, so we would not, you know, affect the area as much. So she, yeah, the, the backyard is really steep, so she cannot, you know, go on her backyard. So really the deck is the only place that she can be outside, you know, for a little bit and enjoy a little bit of the outside area.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wants to speak in favor of this project? Anybody speaking opposition? I suspect not. With that, board comments?
How old is the deck, the present day? How old is the present? There's probably some decay and something going on here.
My name is Vinit Alcha Crooks. I bought the house. I was transferred, um, corporate transfer and I bought the house in nineteen five. The year before the Olympics. So the deck has been in place since and I have since done remediation. You know, with the, the decking, but now my son won't even let his children come out on the deck because it is insecure.
So that's, that, that's probably what prompted you to think of the master plan and do a real renovation, right?
Well, if I was going to, I have to take the deck down because even when I'm growing up, it's, it's pretty shaky. So if I have to take the deck down, then it's just as well, we're gonna extend it towards the stream, just one point nine feet. Because right now my, the, 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 the deck furniture doesn't fit. So, you know, just to extend it minimally, one point nine feet. Um, if we're going to spend that money to take the deck down and rebuild.
Sounds good. Thank you. You're good.
Thank you.
And there's no increase to impervious surface.
Existing slab.
Same slab.
Same slab.
Yeah.
Minimal encroachment.
All right. Oh, wait, if you guys want that, but.
I, I'm going to make a motion to approve ZBA twenty-three dash oh five. Uh, excuse me, to, to agree the request for a variance from chapter sixteen, section seventy-eight, to allow a deck and stairs to encroach into the seventy-five foot stream buffer, subject to conditions presented by staff. One, construction of the deck and stairs must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by Altive Studio dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. An appendix A. If construction has not commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void and construction shall be with hand tools only, no heavy equipment or vehicles allowed in this dream buffer.
Second.
First and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Congratulations, approved.
You're going to invite us to the new day? I'm just kidding.
Got me there. Good job.
Well, good. Enjoy your deck. Uh, before we adjourn, uh, any public comment? Uh, I don't think so. A board comment, uh, I had a very idle thought. I don't know why. I'm not going to belabor it, but. Is, is our board member still allowed to see the sites before they, before they prove, right? I don't think that it's something, I'm not sure everybody knows that. I mean, maybe you do and whatever. We've had a lot of new people in the last couple, last couple of years. And I don't know, we kind of get away from it. Some people don't like to, because they feel a prejudice is one or the other or whatever, but just want to make sure that, uh.
Flash, flash a badge.
Yeah, yeah, everybody's got current badges and all that. So anyways, just want to bring that up, because we haven't talked about being on site much, especially post-COVID. So I didn't know if anybody was, um, doing that or needed credentials or whatever, but it just occurred to me.
I had one just thought, and that was anytime an applicant is doing a stream buffer or a variance that is related to a stream buffer. It seems like a mitigation plan is almost like a, a must. So, um, I don't know if that's ever communicated to applicants. I'm assuming it is, but just for the record, just probably, we should reiterate that as a city.
Yeah. Yeah, um, certainly. Sort of, we're trying to sort of, we're trying to, in our sort of decision, what to request, we're trying to sort of have two things in mind. Like one, like if we think of more recommending denial on something, then we don't want to have the applicant incur sort of additional costs and having to obtain sort of a professional landscape architect and so forth. That, that's on, on the one hand, but like if, if it's sort of the, the, the board's kind of general thought, that, that, that is sort of something that you all want to see kind of for these type, types of cases, then we can, we can certainly sort of make that part of the, the application package that's, that's expected. Sort of at least we can push the applicants to, um, put something together.
Yeah, and it might, it, I don't know. I mean, that's not for me to decide, me and myself only, but it just seems like maybe the applicants will get more bang for their buck. And, and then you guys too mutually, the city and the applicant can kind of understand it's more transparent. Even if they incur a little bit more costs, maybe it gets washed out in the overall cost or what, you know? At some point, they're doing CAD drawings and stuff. Anyway, you're doing presentations, right? So.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
So the other thing I had, I came to mind, so is there the deadline for the submission of last evidence? I mean, is it like one day or two days or five days and then we don't take it anymore? I mean, you kind of, I can't feel bad, they show it on you, you know, when you get this, I, I, I went through it, but you know.
I gave him a full ten minutes.
But yeah, but they use very, very patient on my part.
It's, it's pretty much for like late submissions that aren't part of your package. And we encourage applicants to submit all of us, everything to us pretty much sort of a week before we put the package together. So we can adequately review it. There's, it tends to be that it spurs some applicants into action when they read the staff report. And then sort of, you know.
Sure.
Us puts them or has them put their best foot forward sort of in a, in a sort of increased way. It's sort of yours option at the end of the day to, um, accept or not accept something new newly submitted. And then it's another option that you all have. If, if you think that something newly submitted is too much information, where it's not where you all don't feel, you can adequately vet it, um, to just like, not even have sort of a long presentation, but just to defer the case to the next meeting to give you all adequate time. But it, it depends, it depends on, um, on what, what you all are thinking at, at the moment, but that's an option you all have.
Yeah, the, the, the other thing is, this is, this is probably mine, and I don't even know if I should mention it, but so. I think our city is a little different than other cities. I want to kind of keep it that way. Um. I, I was able to objectively look at their information, but the part that kind of bothered me a little bit, and I don't mind if they, I want them to listen, is, you know, telling each party, yo, you, you're doing misleading stuff. Yeah, you're doing this. Oh, are you kidding me? Just stick to the facts. Um, it might, it might've just been me, but.
No, which is why I didn't, we need more time, because this isn't really relevant. I don't need to rebuttal at each point and pictures of Oliver Dunwoody of, of cases he thought weren't similar or were similar. That was basically was just trying to, uh, kind of find precedences or not.
Yeah, but so, yeah, but I, I, I was objective, you know, really, but that kind of also maybe.
It was bordering of being, uh, I don't know, contempt.
Exactly.
I, I was bordering. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, anyway, I'll be quiet. That's it.
No, that's good. This is board comments normally. We didn't address any other word comment? I know there's more word comment. You guys don't want to go home yet, right?
I think everything's been said.
With that, we're adjourned.
All right.
Right, thank you.